This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for September 21st, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us. And a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Bavir?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Christel?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Treasurer Brenner?
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lineman?
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley?
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toriano?
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand?
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer?
Here.
Deputy Public Work Director Phil Kukler?
Here.
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Okay, all present. Thank you, Emily. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance here at City Hall. I invite you to say it along with us silently at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the part of the meeting that we always set aside for citizens' comments. We have no one in the audience that has a comment to give this evening. Do we have any emails? No emails? And do we have anyone on the phone that wishes to comment at this time? Okay. That is the opportunity for citizens' comments, and there will not be another one at this meeting. We will move on to official and staff comments. Several things this evening. One, I'd like to thank the Park District for a very, very nice event this weekend, Art on the Prairie. The weather was beautiful. The artists were talented, both the ones from Warrenville and from out of town. There was a nice selection of different artwork. The crowds were very, very respectful of wearing their masks and social distancing. So in all and all, it was a delight. The music was good. This is a very successful event. So Ruth and your team, great job. And we hope next year that things will be a little bit better, and we can have a little bigger celebration for Art on the Prairie. But this year was a delight. A reminder about the census. September 30th is the last day to respond to the 2020 Census. Enumerators have been knocking on doors since early August to reach out to those families that have not yet self-responded. You can complete the census at www.my2020census.gov or by calling 1-844-330-2020. Approximately 17% of Warrenville residents are still not counted, so we have just a little ways to go. Do keep in mind that more than $675 billion in federal funding is distributed every year based on the census numbers, and undercount could cost the community millions of dollars in funding over the next 10 years. So do your part today and complete the census. And remember, this count lasts for 10 years again. So the effect is not just for next year, but it's for the nine years after that. So it's really important to get as many people as possible to respond to make sure that we get the money that our community is allotted for each person that's living here. COVID-19 sadly is still with us. We want to remind everyone to continue following the safety guidelines for the prevention and the spread of COVID-19 by, one, wearing a mask in public, two, washing your hands frequently, and also in public, being careful to social distance. All of those things can help defeat this foe. Following the meeting, members of the public, or I should say, member of the public who is with us tonight can exit using the emergency doors on the northeast side of the Council chambers. Okay, that's all I have for this evening. Clerk? Thank you, Mayor. I want to announce that the election petition packets are now available for the consolidated election, which is April 6, 2021. Municipal offices up for election include the mayor, city clerk, treasurer, and one alderman from each of the four city wards. The first day to circulate nomination petitions is September 22nd, which is tomorrow. And packets must be filed with the city clerk December 14th through the 21st. Packets are now available at the City Hall at the lower level by the Manning Avenue at entrance, or you can go on wwwwarrenville-il.us/322/elections. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
No report.
Thank you, Larry. Alderman, we'll go through the list as we do every time, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
I just also want to thank the Park District for Art on the Prairie. I was there on Saturday, and it was really a lovely event in the afternoon. The sun was out. It was a little cold, but the sun made it nice and warm. And there were a lot of people. The music was great, and people were sitting out listening. And I think because we missed our Fourth of July, and we missed our summer days, that quite a few people did come out, and they were listening to the music. And it was just a really nice time. So I'd like to thank the Park District for a wonderful event.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Just want to reiterate what Alderman Berry said. Loved the event this weekend. It was wonderful.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Christel.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. It's Bike There Week, September 21st to 27th. It's easy to participate and celebrate. You can ride your bike to run a short errand, or bike to work, or just enjoy the wonderful trails we have by biking around on the trails. So encourage everybody to get out their bike, oil it up, and take a ride. Thank you.
Good advice. Mary and I did 12 miles tonight around the trails, and it was delightful, if a little chilly. Thanks, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to City Administrator.
Thank you. Two quick things. Our executive assistant, Don Gravetti, and I attended a virtual meeting today with DuPage Mayors and Managers, and Seraphin, the marketing and communications consultant that they use, will be working collectively with DuPage County Health Department to try to make some easy-to-post messages that all of the municipalities, including Warrenville, can help to spread the word about all the safety precautions and changing environment with COVID-19. So I'm looking forward to that, because as you know, we do not have a communication staff. So the easier they can make it for us, the better. It was interesting that some of the bigger towns' communication staff were all part of the meeting, along with the two of us. But anyway, that hopefully will help us to get the message out. The second thing is sort of related to that same topic. We've had a few inquiries about what's going to go on with Halloween and trick-or-treating. We are waiting for the state of Illinois to provide that guidance. That has been asked for by the DuPage County Health Department, as well as the Illinois Municipal League, and going back several weeks. So we believe the Governor's Office or the Illinois Department of Public Health will provide some guidance, either some safety precautions or advice, one way or the other, on what should be done. So please stay tuned. We will post that on our website as soon as we have the information. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney Brooke?
No report for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener, would you like to do that?
Certainly. I move to approve the agenda for the September 21st, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the agenda for this evening? We'll give everyone a chance again. Alderman Ashauer?
Everything's fine.
Okay. Alderman Berry?
Yes, no comment.
Thank you. Alderman Bavir?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
No changes.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
No changes.
Thank you. Alderman Christel?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
No changes.
And Alderman Wilson?
No changes.
Okay. We'll have then a roll call. Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda as presented is approved for this evening. We need to approve two sets of minutes also this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make the motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the September 8, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the September 14, 2020 Community Development Committee Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. A motion and a second. And let's do it this way. Does anyone have any comment or change to make on those minutes? Just speak up and identify yourself. Hearing none, we will go to the roll call again. Thank you. Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, Item 6A, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02020-34, amending Section 8-14-8 of the Warrenville City Code regarding legal non-conforming signs. B, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-55, extending the duration of the March 6, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. C, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and approve Resolution R2020-56, approving a liability transfer agreement with Phillips 66 Company for the Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two. D, accept Staff Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-57, approving a revised version of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the U.S. Department of Energy or Fermilab Village Sanitary Sewer Service, which includes a new Exhibit D to the agreement, and no longer includes a deadline to solicit bids for the sanitary sewer improvement plan. E, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and authorize staff to implement the Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer Staffing Recommendations as outlined in Community and Economic Development Director Menzer's Memo dated September 9, 2020. F, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and direct staff to conduct a public information and input meeting on the potential Warrenville Grove Trail connection project. G, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and approve an authorizing use of the ride DuPage for travel outside of DuPage County on a limited basis for medical appointments only. H, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and authorize staff to partner with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, and the Metropolitan Planning Council for a Homes for a Changing Region Study specific to Warrenville. Create a local workshop to provide input and designate Alderman Davalos as the City Council Representative. I accept Community Development Committee recommendation and accept Matrix Consulting Group's analysis of the city services and impacts on staffing needs report dated August 26, 2020, and direct city staff to consider the recommendations when preparing annual budgets. J, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and approve a policy to honor current and former City of Warrenville elected officials upon their passing. K, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on August 20, 2020. L, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on July 21, 2020. M, receive and file reports of invoices paid up to September 16, 2020 in the amount of $37,491.83, and authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before October 5, 2020 in the amount of $92,286.26. O, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of August 2020 in the amount of $7,133.96. We have a roll call, please.
Motion.
I approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Clerk?
Sure.
Good?
Yep.
Now we'll have a roll call. Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Emily. The agenda as presented has been approved for this evening. We'll move on to our regular agenda. We have one item, the FY 2021 Financial Update and Discussion. And I want to lead off with that. City Administrator John Coakley. John?
Thank you. I'll play leadoff, and then Kevin will fill in the details and correct anything I say that might be an error, just in case. Again, we're doing the financial report every other, sorry, every other meeting, second meeting of the month. Keep everyone apprised what's going on with the whole impacts of the coronavirus. You're all well aware that it has affected our economy, the local economy, the national economy, probably the world economy. You'll see some changes in here, and Kevin very correctly notes some of the, some of the things, I'm going to use some very basic language, less bad than they could be. I want to just note a couple of things, just because they are, and I've been told I'm the doom and gloom minister of COVID, but I don't think that's just recent happenings. Anyway, realistic view is, it's, we're still down money. It's a little bit less bad than we thought it was, we had projected, I should say, but it still paints a difficult picture, especially for the general fund. And if you look at the Capital Maintenance Replacement Fund, it is down substantially because of a lot of factors. And then the hotel tax fund is hopefully going to recover, but it has just been really hurt by this bad economy. The other factor is, I don't have really great news, is that we don't know how long it's going to go on or what's going to happen. So I just want to make sure we have a realistic picture. Kevin will note some of the things that aren't quite so bad and a little bit better, but I don't want to paint the picture at this point. I'll be the first one to jump up and down if things start to get really rosy again, and when we return to some normalcy. But we still are having financial difficulties. So as you'll know, we have the council, the city, the staff has put a hold on many expenditure items and is holding up projects and holding pay increases and other things so we can keep costs down, so we can weather the storm. We do have reserves, and we are going to have to use some of those. We're about to embark on the new fiscal year. We're all kind of groaning about that fact. It's going to be a little more challenging than usual. But with that, I will turn it over to Kevin and let him fill in some of the details. But you've got all the information in front of you, so if there are questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, John. We'll go to our Finance Director, Kevin Dahlstrand. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get too far into this, I want to point out a correction I need to make in my memo. In the first paragraph under the general fund, in the third line, I say that there's a very slight improvement of $73,613. That number is incorrect. If you do the math between the prior one and this report, it's actually an improvement of $192,258. I have no idea where that number came from, so I've checked all the remainder of it, and all the rest are correct. So there's been a little more improvement in there than we anticipated in the general fund. In August, we were projecting the loss to be a little over $1.3 million. Here in September, we're projecting that year-long loss to be a little over $1.15 million. So there's a little bit of an improvement there. It's been helped along by income tax, which at this point is showing a positive variance for the projected year, a little over $83,000. We're not sure yet if that will sustain itself, but as of right now, that's how it looks. Overall, across all funds, we went from our projected loss for the fiscal year of $2,369,000. Here in September, now we're down to $2,103,000. So there has been a little bit of improvement. And again, there's no way to know if that'll be sustained at this point. There was a question raised about property tax revenue. That has been virtually unchanged from year to year, which is exactly what we would expect to happen. While DuPage County did have a program that allowed people to delay when they paid, it was a much more conservative program than other counties had. And there really has been very little change in the dollars that we've received year over year. The CMRP has no real change from August to September. There's been a very slight change of an additional 1% loss. So there's really not a whole lot happening there right now. Through September, we have still received no amusement tax revenue for anything that was collected during the year. We did receive a few dollars, but those were for back due taxes that were collected before May. The hotel tax fund has shown a little bit of improvement. We were projecting a loss of 75% in August. We now have that down to 73%, so it's not a huge improvement, but it is a little bit of improvement. And the final note will be that the MFT Motor Fuel Tax, which is the state shared money we get, is currently projected to be right on budget. So there's really not been a decline on that at this point. And I can entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Kevin. Just a quick question. We see that Thornton's gas station is open now. Do we anticipate that they're going to give us some help with some tax revenue?
Absolutely. They should be collecting the local motor fuel tax. We'll obviously get sales tax. There'll be some state shared sales tax that'll come from them, as well from the motor fuel tax. So that'll be a good thing to have. They will absolutely help.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Mary, what was that correction number again on the general fund?
So if you look in the first paragraph of the memo, under the general fund, in the third line, it reads, "The figure represents a very slight improvement of about $73,613." That's $73,613. Should read $192,258. 192,258.
All right, that's the number I got from subtraction. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the aldermen for comments and our questions. For Kevin or John, beginning with Alderman Ashauer?
Just glad to see there's some improvement.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bavir?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, just a couple. I appreciate this report so much, and I was also happy on the last page when you listed a couple of things that we were saving because they weren't occurring, some of the events. Because I'm always thinking about, and I don't, I'm not requesting that we keep track of this, but in the back of my mind are always things like, for instance, John mentioned some of the conferences that are going on, and the weekly report talks about some of the conferences that all have become virtual. So I keep thinking mileage, travel, meals, things like that. Each one, maybe not a lot, but added up could be several thousand dollars, I'm sure, if not more than several. So I appreciated this. This is the first time I really saw savings, these two items. So I just appreciate this whole picture. The second thing is the amusement tax. This goes through what time, Kevin? Which month is the end for this report?
Well, so what this report does right now is goes through the September collection of August taxes. So now that there's been some things opening up, we should start to see a little money coming in in the future months. Because remember, the collections are for this report a month behind. So when we're reporting in September, it's for the taxes from August.
Right, okay. Because I happened to be in Cantera on Saturday night, and main event was packed, and the theater was pretty well attended also. So I would think that would start to come back, if that's any indication. So anyway, thank you for the report. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. I appreciate Kevin's correction on Page 1. I have kind of a bigger picture question here, which is that currently, the focus of these updates seems to be almost entirely about whether our major revenue losses have been or not as bad as we thought that they would be a month or two ago. And that's important. Being able to predict what's happening is a big part of these conversations. But shouldn't we be taking a slightly different view? For one thing, if we do have a big revenue loss, what policies are we going to need to change, financial policies, or, you know, moving money from fund to fund to the extent that we can, in order to fill in those revenue gaps, at least temporarily? I know that Administrator Coakley mentioned the use of fund balance, but we don't see those fund balances in any of these updates. So it's very hard for me, as an alderman, to see how fast we're burning through those reserves and how long we may have to act. And that would be very helpful as part of this conversation, because another factor here, obviously, is which staff or services are going to be impacted by these revenue losses if we don't take steps or change our financial policies. And I know that those are big-picture conversations that need to be had, sometimes with the whole budget in front of us, costs and revenues. But it doesn't seem to me, with the $2 million figure that is in front of me right now, that we can wait until the next budget cycle to have some of those bigger policy conversations, or at least to try and frame the questions that we're going to need to be asking ourselves as a council in order to shape a reasonable cost-benefit analysis, and to do the work of a council to set our policy priorities. So I would like to see some of those bigger pictures reflected in these updates, if that's possible. If that's possible, I'd like to hear from staff about whether it is, and also just to talk a little bit about some of those financial policies that we might need to start thinking about right now. What are the options and tools that we could use to address these shortcomings?
Okay, thank you. City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman. Those are some very good questions. I don't have the answers at this point. I don't think you expected that I would have ready answers for those. Those are some things that Kevin and I will need to meet and discuss. Very good, very good questions and points. good, very good questions and points. Clearly, we are still operating in the V-shaped economic recovery, which isn't, hasn't come, a short-term solution that we're still focusing on. As you speak, I'm thinking more philosophically here. So we need to start turning our attention to those. That will also come naturally as we, as staff starts to plan for next year's budget. We do that months before the council gets that information. So this is all good timing and good questions to facilitate. At this moment, it is my understanding and somewhat belief, but that's what I'll sit down with Kevin and go over, that we have sufficient funds to get through this year. But you are absolutely right, Alderman. This isn't just about this fiscal year. I preach that all the time internally. The city must be here financially stable and sustainable beyond this year, beyond the time that all of us will even be here. So those are good questions. We can start looking at that. I would ask, though, that we, and I would love to get Kevin's input because he will be doing most of this work with his staff. But we would look for bringing back some of those things for the next update unless there's an urgency to bring that back and then in the interim.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. In two weeks, we'll, we'll hear the answers and some.
Mayor, can I add to that, please?
Four weeks, sorry.
Can I, can I add to this?
Absolutely, Kevin.
So it'd be very much my goal to be able to present some, some of the things that the Aldermen has raised. And I've wanted to be able to do that. However, I will say the brakes have been put on that a little bit by us getting the fiscal year 2020 audit closed, closed, closed out and completed. It's been a little harder. We've had to do a lot more of it remotely than we've been able to do in person. And it's led to some lags in being able to move things back, back, back and forth and move them quick enough. The goal here, once that gets closed out, we will be able to do, I don't want to get too into the weeds. We'll be able to do some accounting that will allow us to present the current year with accurate figures. Right now, we're not able to do that because of accrual accounting and how that works. But as soon as we're able to make that transition from 2020 to 2021, get everything booked the way it's supposed to be booked, we'll be able to present more details and effect on funds and effect on our reserves and those things. So that's what we're aiming for and will be, be there as soon as we possibly can be.
Okay, I mean, the, the only, the only thing that I would add, I think, is that one specific thing I would like at least some discussion about, if staff is able to, when we next have this conversation. And I realize that this is a poor letter word and that no one on the council likes this idea and that I'm not in favor of it and I'm not trying to suggest it, but I want to know what our options are. And I'm talking about borrowing.
Borrowing, I believe she said.
Yeah, borrowing. If, if that would be necessary, what circumstances might trigger us to need to do anything like that? Just some options so that we can have that discussion. And I realize it is a red button flashing light thing here. And I understand the staff's perspective and council's perspective, but if you're short of money and you've got to provide services, and if we think that this is going to be temporary, it's hard not to consider the possibility, at least with borrowing.
Thank you, Alderman. Back to Administrator Coakley. Any final comment?
I think that covered it all. One thing I was just wondering, and I think Kevin answered it, is it's, he's not sure. He knows this question to be coming from me. He's got to get many things done that are important, and I think we all understand. But is there a general timeframe that you're looking at? Is it reasonable to think, in other words, that we could have something by the next, I just committed to the next financial update? What month is this? Mid-October. I'm not sure if that's reasonable based on what you just said, though, Kevin. So we should clarify that so we're all on the same page and everybody has the same expectations.
Sure, I should have clarified that. I'm sorry, Mayor. Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm ready. The, the answer to that, that is, we have until the end of October to have all of the fiscal year stuff completed. And unless our auditors suggest that we seek a, an extension, which is always available to us, I think we should, should be able to have some idea of many of those, those things by the time we do the October update. We may not have every answer we want, but we'll have more answers than we have right now. So I would say that by, by the time we do the October update, we should be able to provide much, much more information.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Back to John.
Yes, I'm, again, thank you, Alderman Goodman. I'm thinking it's at real time as we're, as we're working through this discussion right now. I'm going to suggest that maybe the Fund Balance Work Group, Alderman Goodman, Alderman Wilson, and Finance Director and I get together, just have a meeting, virtual meeting. We can talk about these things to make sure we're looking at the right things. I will, if that's okay with both of you, I will ask Kevin to figure out when the timing would make more sense based on his schedule. Again, he's doing all that work. And then we can make sure we have, we're looking at the things that you would like to look at. That's the group, too, that the council is designated to, or for staff and your representatives, those two Aldermen, to look at these things. We used to just worry about fund balances being too high. And now our, have expanded some, but I think that makes imminent sense to me if, if it works for all of you.
Okay, Alderman Goodman, are we good at this point?
Sure. I mean, I would say that if there are time constraints, then having sort of big, big picture discussions without a lot of details is probably okay. And if we have more time to put things together, then having more details in front of us is great, too. So it depends upon staff's availability. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Crishell.
Yeah, my only comment is, you know, I agree with Alderman Davalos. I think, you know, seeing people, you know, in restaurants and buying things, I think people are getting a little more comfortable and while still using their social distancing practices and wearing masks. But I think it's, it's promising to see that, you know, some improvement in these numbers. And then looking at estimated numbers, which are much lower than actual numbers on some of these columns for the upcoming months, we, it appears that we may be in a better place here in a couple of months as well. So that's promising as well.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. Amidst all the good discussion we're having, I'm wondering what the impact is from the state and how our reliance on state money could be affected by whatever the Springfield decides to do. So if that can be thrown into the next report, I don't need anybody to respond to it now, but I would just like to know what the impacts, potential impacts could be from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Good question. Alderman Wilson.
Oh, yeah. First thing that we get, we don't know exactly when we receive all of the figures on each. Is it on a monthly basis, for instance, on the fuel? Do we get that for the preceding month? Or when do we get it so that we have up-to-date figures?
Kevin?
Yeah, so we, so we receive a state allocation of state shared motor fuel tax every month. And we also receive the local motor fuel tax every month as well. And they're both for the prior months.
Okay, that being, and then we are depending upon their reports to us and the figures that we get. I do agree that we should get together with the, our subcommittee and try to put together the latest figures that we have. And like Leah and so Alderman Goodman said, we should look at this. And I would be delighted to set up, join that meeting and have one of our meetings together to start looking at these figures a little bit deeper and a little bit further along this year.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else that want to chime in for a final comment before we move on? Identify yourself and speak up. Okay, everyone's been heard. Good. We will work our way through the rest of the agenda for this evening. Go fairly smoothly, I guess. Under unfinished business, we have nothing. Under new business, there's nothing listed. We have no occasion for a closed session this evening. We just need one final motion. That would be the motion to adjourn. So who would like to do that?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, clerk?
Yes.
She's got it. All right. So the final roll call for the evening, please. Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Emily. We are adjourned for this evening. A reminder again, please stay safe, stay healthy, and we will see you again in a week. Good night.
Have a nice night, everyone.